Good morning. I called, ordered the recess meeting of May the 28th, 2025. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Chauncey.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Hilton. Dr. Highlander.
Here.
Dr. Mackey.
Will not be with us today.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Shipley. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Chairman Eversol.
Here. Indication and pledge will be conducted by Commissioner Shipley, so all please rise.
Death Pastor Jamie Benoy, Trinity Lutheran Church, please come out.
Let's open this meeting with water. Almighty God, we give you thanks that you provide for the work of your community through the different gifts of this, the members of this community and committee. Help us to recognize and act upon every opportunity for service. Guide our, our minds and our voices to be in your one spirit, that everything we think, say, or do may be for the common good of Hamilton County. All this, we pray in your merciful name. Amen.
Face flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, Commissioner Shipley. Madam Clerk, I'm showing one item on the recessed agenda, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this is the item that we put till today because of the Baker-Donaldson review?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, Baker-Donaldson is still not complete with their review, so without objection, can we move that to the 11th of June? Give it two more weeks for Baker-Donaldson to complete their review?
We can do that.
Okay. All right. We'll now adjourn the recess meeting and go into agenda session. So Madam Clerk, your, your roll call.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Beck. Commissioner Chauncey.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Hilton. Dr. Highlander.
Here.
Dr. Mackey absent. Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Shipley. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Chairman Eversol.
Here. We do have one presentation on the agenda today. We do have a resolution. So Ms. Sonia, if you'll come to the mic, I'll go ahead as you come to the mic, we'll read the resolution into record. Good, you got to.
Hamilton County, Tennessee Board of Commissioners offers this congratulation to Lo Wilkins. On behalf of the officials and citizens of Hamilton County, we would like to thank you for 36 years of dedicated service. You are to be commended for the example you have presented to all who have been fortunate to have worked with you. From your start as an environmentalist in 1977, inspired by your grandmother's legacy, to your leadership as Director of Environmental Health, your unwavering commitment has left a lasting impact on public health in Hamilton County. Your work has protected and served countless lives through oversight of restaurant inspections, pool safety, rabies control, and foodborne illness response. The sincerity and dedication that you have put into each of those years will forever be remembered and will be sorely missed. Congratulations on your retirement. Whereas such excellence deserves public acclaim and recognition, now therefore be it resolved by the County of Hamilton that this certificate of congratulations be conferred, presented this 28th day of May, 2025.
Good morning, and thank you Chairman Eversol and fellow commissioners and Chief Roddy on behalf of the Mayor's Office for giving us the opportunity to recognize Mr. Stephen Lo Wilkins for his 36 years in public health, serving in the Department of Environmental Health Services at the Hamilton County Health Department. Lo will be retiring on June 10th, 2025. He began his career at the Health Department shortly after graduating from East Tennessee State University in 1977, where he pursued a degree in environmental health engineering. As stated, his interest and desire for a career as an environmentalist was influenced by his grandmother, who was an instructor for the Tennessee Department of Health. But due to a, a county-wide budget reduction, he was laid off, but his passion for serving the Hamilton County community brought him back, and we're fortunate for that. He served in the following roles at the Hamilton County Health Department. He started out as an environmental health inspector, promoted to senior environmental health inspector, promoted to environmental health program manager, and where he was eventually appointed as the Director of Environmental Health Services on July 29th, 2020. Under his leadership and guidance, the Environmental Health Services Department has seen steady growth. Lo has developed, developed a committed staff, most of them are here today, who all serve to protect public health by ensuring the safety of food, water, and other aspects of the environment. Lo, thank you for your leadership, thank you for your hard work and dedication in the field of environmental health, and most importantly, thank you for the compassion, the support, and the mentorship that you have given to others. I, for one, have greatly benefited from your support in my current role as interim administrator for the Health Department. You will be greatly missed. Congratulations on your department, I wish you the best, and Karen also wanted to say something, but thank you.
I'm here just representing the thousands of restaurants, bars, event planners that have benefited from the hard work and dedication of Lo Wilkins. I just want to say thanks to your commitment and the attitude of how can I help you and what can I do for you? It's been a pleasure. Thank you for the powerade that saved me from a heat stroke many years ago, and thank you for being in the trenches with us, so congratulations, and you definitely deserve the retirement after 36, probably more than that, years of service, so thank you.
Thank you for having me this morning. As I retire, thank you for what an excellent way to end my career. Very, very special. It's been my honor to work for Hamilton County and the Department of Environmental Health. Working with you has been a pleasure and a privilege. It's been one, I have been, it's been wonderful to work with my coworkers. I want to thank you for your time working together. I will cherish the memories we created together and challenges we have overcome. I will miss you when I retire. Thank you, thank you for this special occasion.
Commissioner Baker?
Ah, Lo.
Hey, yes, sir.
How long have we spent together? Watching our kids grow up together, but I remember when I had a piece of pizza and Riverbend, and we used to shudder when we'd see you come in because we knew you'd be tough but fair. And, and you always were, and it's always appreciated. You're an excellent person, and I hope you've got other things planned because you're too talented to retire, retire, so good luck.
Awful, nice, sir, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Lo, Lo, two things real quick. Number one, thank you for, for helping make Hamilton County better. You've left a footprint in, in our county that's going to be hard to feel in some cases, but you've, you've left a legacy to help us build as it deals within our Health Department, environmental health, so I do appreciate you and appreciate your contribution. Would like to, also, if you wouldn't mind, to step up here and walk across the front, we'd each like to shake your hand for your service.
Have me, my privilege, my privilege, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we will move forward. With that, we'll be looking at minutes to be entered into the record for next week, and that is for the regular meeting on May the 14th. We'll also be looking at entering two reports into the, to the record next week. That will go into resolutions, Resolution 625-1, so Madam Clerk, you read the captions.
Resolution 625-1, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions and the bonds and owes of notaries previously elected.
Okay, so no lights, no one standing, we'll take that up next week, 625-2.
Resolution 625-2, a resolution to appoint a regular member to the Hamilton County Industrial Development Board to fill the unexpired term of Sylvester Harris. This will appoint Demetrius Kounron.
Okay. See no lights for conversation, no one standing, we'll take this up next week. That ends the committee as a whole. We do have some committee meetings, or committees. Finance Committee has three items, take that up immediately following our meeting. And then Commissioner Hilton, you've got one building in economics, we'll take that immediately after finance, is that okay? Do it from the Ds. Okay. With that, we'll move into announcements, so Commissioner Shipley.
Thanks Chairman. I have one announcement to congratulate Laura Jenkins and Weatherly Barker. They come in second in the state, say Daisy, in the girls' tennis doubles, so they were close. I have something else I want to talk about this morning that has nothing to do with the mayor's response to Earl Langer. I personally could care less what, think Earl Langer has her own business there to operate their business. But for several weeks, I've had calls about problems with families at Earl Langer. What triggered me to say something this morning is the response that was made by Earl Langer at being a world-class hospital. So last Tuesday, my grandson was injured on a job here in Chattanooga. He was taken by EMS to Earl Langer, and I want to thank EMS, they got the bleeding stopped, and they helped. But when he got to the hospital, things kind of went downhill. He was put in a room, and there was 11 more people in these curtain rooms. They weren't real rooms, but that's okay. He was in there and he was safe. They don't have beds in them, so he was to use a recliner. Well, his recliner was broke, it didn't work. So I sent pictures to each one of you, got an only bone of his leg, damage it did. Later in the afternoon, about five, six o'clock, they took him x-rayed it, determined he would need surgery. They brought him back, left him in a wheelchair, and that's where he sat until 11 o'clock. Then none of you gentlemen sitting up here, nobody in this room expects to be treated that way in a hospital. So at 11 o'clock, a nurse came and said, this part of the hospital closes at 11, we will have to put you in the lobby. So these people with IVs in them, open wounds, one gentleman, elderly person, we all know, I won't call his name, we know his health's bad, was forced to sit in a wheelchair from 11 o'clock to 8:30 in the morning, in the lobby. My grandson sat there with a IV, open wound in the lobby. They were forced to use a public restroom, throw their IVs in there. It's not real sanitary these days. In 2025, there's a lot of diseases that wasn't around when we were young. That prompted me to say something about this because people should not be treated that way in 2025. We should have better. I remember when Earl Langer Hospital, if you got hurt, that's where you wanted to go. It was a bad safety place, and they got on top of it. This, to me, is not a world-class situation, but maybe a third-world situation. So, in my opinion, that needs to be addressed, whether it's addressed by this county commission or who. People deserve better. So my first thought when it happened was those Huskies over there, boy, they got better attention than them twelve human beings did. Chairman, that's all I got, and there'll be no apology for anything I said.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, Gino, I'm so sorry to hear that. I spent 20 years as a hospital administrator. Earl Langer, I spent seven years there and ran Children's Hospital. A year ago, my wife had her knee replaced there, and I got to do a tour around the hospital. And it's a Level One Trauma Center, so if you come in, the sickest of the sick are taken care of first. Not to say demean anything for any, any level of care, but I walked through the ED Emergency Department, and I was, I was, I couldn't believe it, the volume was, was huge, and they were all really, really sick. So, I don't know how many thousands and thousands of patients. There's something called continuous quality improvement that every hospital in the country has to go through with, used to be Joint Commission and accreditation, health organizations, I think it's CMP or something like that. And they're constantly striving to improve care, so, yeah, I mean, I had, I've had issues over, over the years, I've seen, and I'll, I can tell you, knowing the leadership at Earl Langer, that they will sincerely look at your issue, I would suggest, recommend that you take it to the CEO and, and let him work through it. I know that's of concern to them, but I will say this, I personally dealt with Earl Langer for many years, and their level of care is second to none, can always be better, but can't we all? Thank you.
Commissioner Shipley?
One thing I did forget, what the nurses, the staff, and the doctors operated on my grandson did a great job. So the problem here is that job, it's not with the staff, that's it.
Thank you. Let me ask, before we move on to the next, I guess Commissioner Smith, you'll be next, but I want to ask Attorney Taylor just a question. We kind of relinquished our rights with Earl Langer a couple of years ago, so we really, do we have any say-so on what they do and how they do?
No, sir, no, sir. They're autonomous from you all.
Yeah, because I think a couple of years ago, we, it actually happened before, it started before we came, most of us came aboard, and so they kind of, they're kind of their own, so I don't know, as a commission, what we can do, and so, so, but we, however we can support, Commissioner Shipley. We'll, we'll, or if your grandson.
It's not Alan Bateman grandson, it's about everybody in this room, everybody in Hamilton County. I mean, he got through it, he's a young 19-year-old boy, I, I hope he, you know, always had mobility in his legs, but I just don't see that kind of treatment. Where they're sick, using a public restroom, they're bleeding, anything in the lobby seems to me that, that's out of character.
Yep. Okay. Commissioner Smith?
No announcements, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Beck? Commissioner Sharp?
No announcements.
Commissioner Hilton? Commissioner Chauncey?
No announcements.
Commissioner Highlander? Mr. Graham?
Sorry to break the streak, Chairman. The, before we were off last week in training, you know, there was some mention of the stadium before that, and I highly recommend that my colleagues all ride by there, there's a lot of progress going on, and it's really starting to look good. Matter of fact, if, if all of you would like, I'll contact, let me tell you about history, but I'll contact you, see if I can get us all to tour to, to where the progress is in the stadium, but it's really starting to look good. This Saturday, the National Cemetery is picking up the flags at the cemetery, and they're looking for volunteers, so if anybody has a little time, maybe Saturday morning, they usually get a lot of volunteers, but the more the barrier, because it helps get it done a lot quicker, and there's nearly 50,000 graves there that all. Back from training last week, we had a, a really nice breakfast with the, our emergency services people, and, and last week was emergency services week, and I, that was an awesome breakfast, by the way, they are excellently cooked, I really appreciated that, but I also pre-appreciated the fact that I could get over there, fellow commissioners could get over there and, and thank them personally for the service that they provide, and let them know, and let them know publicly that, that their service does not go unappreciated, and we, we couldn't thrive in this county without them, so, and, and not just our EMS, but our Sheriff's Department and all of our first responders, but, but last week was EMS week, so, so I greatly appreciate their service, and I greatly appreciate that breakfast, that was wonderful, and the camaraderie that we got to do with the young men and young women that are there. I know, I, I, I'm going to put a plug in, you know, I have a little healthy shoe over here, but when it comes to rehab. Biscuits were good, weren't they? I think, I think Ms. Cooper, I don't know if she did the biscuits or whatever, but they, those biscuits were good. You did none of the cooking, but I tell you what, the, the food was outstanding, so good, good way to bring it, so. Commissioner Howler, do you have something else to add?
Yes, sir, I, I apologize for not saying it earlier, but the, for Memorial Day, several of us went to the, to the park, the, at the cemetery. It was just an awe-inspiring program. Chairman spoke, or Congressman spoke, but you know, the, see the veterans, the Gold Star wives, it was such, so moving, and, and I got a picture this morning of my grandson serving in Greece right now, and he was with National Guard there for two weeks, doing some service, and I, I cannot tell you how much, I think, not just me, but all of us appreciate those that are serving our country. Our commissioners really do, and thank you for the speech that you gave, Chairman Eversol, and, and I appreciate so much the military service, and thank you all.
Commissioner Sharp, do you have something to add?
Well, Chairman, if I may, I was going to ask our colleague from District 11 a question about the picking up of those flags Saturday morning, yeah, at eight o'clock, I, I've, I'm coaching two games of 10 and 11-year-old soccer Saturday morning, but if I could gather up some of those soccer players after the games, let me come over there and do that if there's still work to be done, I'm not sure what the timeframe is. Yeah, for sure. And I have to apologize, I wasn't able to make it there on Saturday. Rave reviews from the programming. Certainly a day to reflect upon the sacrifice that so many have made for this nation. You know, my grandfather narrowly escaped his peril in the Battle of the Argonne Forest in World War I. We talk about it a whole lot. But my heart's with all those families, and I hope, hopefully, we'll get out there on Saturday in time to get a little work. Thank you.
Attorney Taylor? The mayor's? Anything of the mayor's? All right. Couple of things. Number one is this weekend, Food City. I tell you what, they're becoming a huge corporate ambassador and a lot of things in our community. If you think about just the Chattanooga National Cemetery, they were out there Saturday putting flags down en masse. It took them about, I guess, they'd hopefully be done by noon is the goal. So, that kind of gives you a timeframe. But they were also there last fall, late fall, when we were doing the Rees across Chattanooga, and they're a great corporate citizen for our community, and I think what they do, a great job. I want to give them a shout out. Next thing is, is I've asked Commissioner Smith, who's Chair Finance, to, next week, after our regular meeting, is that we have budget hearings and to include the schools because I think each one of us last night were sent the school budgets in detail, including the last five years. Patricia has printed it all for us, so that we'll each have a hard copy that she'll be handing out this morning. And then we're going to also look at general government. So, we're going to be some questions about general government. I think there's, Lee, there were some questions. I had some questions. I know several had some questions, and so I had Patricia to print off, and so we'll give you guys a chance, an opportunity over the next week, but we're going to spend some time next week. I think you, like me, have been getting a lot of emails, postcards, cards from teachers. I've got, there were three in my box this morning from students that didn't say what grade they were in, but it looked like they were probably middle to early elementary school. They were sending a little postcard note. So, I think it'd be important for us to kind of look at the school budget with the schools here. So, Commissioner Smith, if we can make sure the school system's here and general government, that'll give us a chance to kind of talk through those. Okay. With that, and that'll be immediately following the regular meeting next week, and it's like today, it's a short meeting. So, with that said, we'll move to the public portion of it. So, if anybody from the general public has anything to say, the exception is on. You're welcome to come forward. Do you name an address? You have three minutes. Okay. Time will begin when you state your name and address.
My name's Jim Watson. I live at eighty-four seventy-seven Cross Timber Circle in Hickson, in Middle Valley. Been there since nineteen seventy-five. About five years ago, I've never said any of this, but I've been getting a lot of concerns about the quality of living in Hamilton County just the past five years. I know some of these things you cannot address because it's out of your jurisdiction, but you can certainly express them to other forms of, other branches of the government. But some of the things you can, and the concerns that I have are the following. One is traffic. It seems to be getting worse every day. Speeding is ridiculous. If you go on one fifty-three, driving fifty-five miles an hour, you better be on the shoulder. Seventy, seventy-five, eighty miles an hour is common. Railroad crossings at Hickson. A few months ago, I sat at one of the railroad crossings for four minutes with an ambulance with their lights on, sitting next to me, waiting for the train to go by. And you know seconds can mean a person's life. Running red lights, I've never seen that before until about five years ago. A long time ago, when I was learning to drive, it was, the rule was, unwritten rule was, if you're at a light, if you're going to a light and it turns yellow, you better step on the gas because somebody behind you is going to hit you. Now, it's like red lights, they're not even to the intersection, and the light turns red, and they keep going. And that's like, I see that every day. Housing. In Middle Valley, there are two active developments and a third one on Walnut that's going to be added soon. And that's going to create, there's going to be two hundred-plus more cars on Middle Valley Road every day in about a year. The intersection at Hickson Pike and Middle Valley Road is going to be backed up to Food City. It's already halfway there now. There's going to be more flooding in the future, and you've seen that there's, what happened with just three and a half inches of rain a week or so ago, it's going to get worse. Education, I could speak about that forever, but I'm not. The quality has diminished. Property taxes, every place I know, from Maine to Florida, when you have higher population density, you have higher property taxes. With the higher density, we're going to have higher property taxes. It's plain and simple. Litter is getting worse, and I understand the restrictions you have now on litter, but it's just going to get worse, and we need a new program. But my number-one concern is green space. We're losing green space all the time. And once you lose, you can solve all these other problems, but once you lose green space, it's gone. You're never going to get it back. And the benefits of green space are water quality, air quality, plus flood restrictions, plus all kinds of other benefits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Do we have anybody else? Okay. Did you lie down? Did you lie? Okay, there it is. Sorry, Mr. Beck.
Recognize Pastor Terry Lad that's here with us today. Pastor Lad at the First Baptist Church on, what street is that? That's on Eighth Street. Yeah, Eighth Street. Pastor Terry Lad.
Pastor, welcome. Commissioner Howland, do you have something to add? Okay. Okay. With no one else with any other business, we'll be adjourned till June the fourth at nine-thirty AM. We'll begin our committee meetings and start finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Clerk, please read six twenty-five dash three.
Resolution six twenty-five dash three, a resolution.